Good evening. The May 28th, 2025 council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Rassus?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Here. Yes, please stand for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions do flag the United States of America. The which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Would you just please stay standing for a moment of silence for Mr. A.V. I will now read the mission statement of the City Council. The Long Branch Mayor, the City Council, and the administration are committed to cultivating the environmental, mutual trust, and respect of values, the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life of all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Reading is approved at previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Consideration of ordinance, public hearing on consideration. Ordinance 00825. Calendar year, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A 40-4514. This ordinance was introduced on May 14th, 2025, and established as a cap bank on NJS 40A 4-451 ET Square. Provides that in the appropriation of its annual budget, the municipality should limit any increase in said budget to 2.5 unless authorized by ordinance an increase to a 3.5 over the previous years. Final appropriations, subject to certain exceptions, NJSA 40A 4-4515A, provides that the municipality may, when authorized by ordinance, appropriate the difference between the amount of its actual and final appropriation and the 3.5 percentage rates as expectation to its final appropriations in either by the next two succeeding years. This ordinance allows to appropriation increases above 2.5%. I need a motion to open the public hearing on the ordinance only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make on this ordinance only, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You'll have five minutes and may only speak once on the ordinance 00825. Seeing there's none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? This is the second reading of ordinance 08-25. I need a motion to adopt on the second and the final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Ordinance for introduction is none. Public participation for resolutions and general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please stay to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You'll have five minutes and may only speak once. Requesting one-minute notification, Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I have announcement to make. On November, this November 4th, 2025, an election will be held for a council seat formerly held by Councilwoman Selly, who passed, and is currently being held by appointed replacement Councilman Glenn Rassus. Petitions, which are like applications to run for this council seat, will be available at the city clerk's office on June 12th, 2025. Those interested in running for council can contact the city clerk for further details. Councilman Rassus, as an appointed councilman, will you be running for the elected council seat you currently hold as an appointee? Yes or no?
You answered a good question, Mr. Rassus. You don't have to answer.
Uh, I'm gonna withhold my answer at this moment.
You're not going to answer the question?
Right.
Being directed by Council President Vera. Do you think, Murat, you should be running for council? You couldn't even answer the credentials you had for council because Vera told you not to say it the night you were sworn in?
I'd rather not comment to your...
Yeah, you'd rather not comment?
Yeah.
Go through me, Mr.
Yeah, be nice if we had independent-minded people who could think in this council rather than those that follow Vera.
That's your...
Council President Vera, have you and council made a deal for a 10-year, $1,200,000 lease for the newly purchased $1,200,000 West Long Branch ladder fire truck? Yes or no?
What, I answer that question?
Council President Vera, do you have an answer, yes or no?
No.
No, because you don't know what's going on. Council President Vera, why isn't any of this on the public record?
Any what?
Council President Vera, since you don't know why the ladder truck's not on public record and you're negotiating, Council President Vera, will there be additional personnel hired by the Long Branch Fire Department to accommodate the subject ladder fire truck? Yes or no?
You don't wanna, you don't wanna answers. Every time I try to answer something, you just start...
All right, let's hear the answer. Yes or no?
I'll let you know, I'll let...
No, you can't speak for yourself. Nobody else will speak for you.
No.
You're the elected official.
Let me tell you right now...
Mr. Raynone is nobody. He's not an elected official. He is not a voter in Long Branch because he's not a resident in Long Branch. You were elected, and you haven't a clue what's going on.
Now, do you want me to...
Council President Vera, can you and council confirm on Friday, April 25th, the authorities served the city fire department subpoenas and files and records? Yes or no?
Let me go back to the old question.
Council President Vera, will you and council cooperate with the authorities on an investigation involving a former city fire chief and firefighter who, while affiliated with the city fire department, was in full knowledge of contracts, being awarded to a firm he was associated with to do inspection of city fire equipment? Yes or no, Mr. Vera?
Do you...
You still don't know what's going on.
I lose my breath.
Council President Vera, will you and council also cooperate and provide all information necessary to the authorities and take whatever action is necessary concerning the mayor as a public official in his role as then part of the governing body in approving these conflict-of-interest fire department contracts? Yes or no?
I don't...
Still having a clue what's going on, do you, President Vera?
Not a question.
Council President Vera?
One-minute notification.
Resolution 101 states the current public safety director has approved a $500,000 no-bid contract for equipment for the police department. Council President Vera, name the public safety director.
Charles Shirley.
Mr. Shirley's acting...
You finally answered one question. Very good.
Makes you feel good. Okay.
Council President Vera, can you explain the catastrophe on the oceanfront with Surfside Beach Bar?
No.
Where every department in this city had a catastrophic failure in monitoring the illegal permanent foundation put in the beach by Charles Kushner of Avenue La Club?
No.
You can't explain it.
No, I'm not gonna answer.
So then you would know that the city is junk government, complete junk government across the board.
Five minutes.
Good evening, all. I'm here to discuss my two pet issues, taxes and the safety of our streets. First of all, I wasn't here at the prior meeting two weeks ago, but I did listen to it. And regarding the municipal taxes, it was conveniently articulated that there was no increase. Now, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a politician, I'm none of the above, but I'm like all of you taxpayers. If indeed the tax rate is as-is, and certainly has not risen as the CFO mentioned in the last meeting, but the valuations of the households have gone through the roof, I mean, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that you multiply the tax rate by the valuations. Now, if...
But that's not what the CFO, you would be right if that was true, but that's not the case.
Okay, this is my time. You can speak later.
Oh, I thought you wanted an answer to your question. I apologize.
Well, let me finish. I mean, as, you can have your time. So if indeed that's the case, I mean, that's the way my taxes had gone up by 24% the year prior, and it had been articulated to me that it was because the valuation had been so high. But the point is, no one has had the decency to explain this to the average taxpayer. You know, you're an attorney, sir, you probably have better grasp of those things, but your average taxpayer does it. And I think it would behoove everyone to sit down and say, hey, we're taking in this amount of money, we're expending this amount, let's explain why. It seems, as someone had mentioned in one of the prior meetings, that the electric bills were going up by 18%. Well, have the taxes gone up 18% to accommodate for that or not? But the bottom line is simply this, sir, and ma'am. Taxes are continuing to mount without any explanation, no cuts are being made, nothing is communicated to the average taxpayers, and I think that's the least that we're all owed, especially in light of the fact that I don't feel safe on these streets. Mr. Dangler has no problem walking on Broadway, and I respect you, sir. However, the majority of the taxpayers are not that way. Speak to the owner of Puerto de Sol. His business has decreased tremendously since the murder in March on Broadway. It's not on account of the business, the overall economy has nothing to do with that. It's because people are afraid. And it seems like we currently have a new public safety director, is that correct? So I welcome, and then hopefully there can be some communication, some kind of directive, something out there to try and restore some of the confidence, because the confidence is lacking. And as I had mentioned on other situations, take a pulse, you know? Some of you may not take a pulse of that. Perhaps this is my medicine that's coming out about taking a pulse, but I want to make sure that there is a pulse and that there isn't a dead person that has no pulse. I beg of all of you. Address those two issues. Help the tax situation, number one. Number two, help to restore the confidence so that way people in base-paying Long Branch, I'm not talking about payment in lieu of tax garbage that has no valuation increase. Those people don't give a damn. They're not gonna come marching down Broadway. They don't go to Puerto Sol. They go directly on Julyne Avenue. When people are directed to go to Pure Village, what is the mode of transport? They're either directed down Cedar Avenue or down Julyne Avenue. None of them go down Broadway, sir. Mr. Dangler, and I can attest to that.
Five minutes.
Thank you. You wanna address that?
Yeah, I just, maybe in what I was trying to explain, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, is what Mr. Martin said was that the amount of money that we raise by taxation stayed the same. So our part of the budget is that amount that's raised by taxation. Now, what affects an individual property owner is your evaluation in some respects, but what happens when the rate stays the same and the valuations go up is that the rate goes down, actually, when our budget stays the same.
Does it?
No, no, it actually does, because what happens is if, just, I'm just saying this, if the valuation is a billion dollars and we're raising $10, and next year the evaluation is $2 billion, and we're still raising $10, the rate gets cut in half. So that's the way it works. What you're talking about is that not all properties go up the same value, but if some properties go up a lot and some go up a little, some will see tax decreases and some will see tax increases. But our part of the world, the part that we control here in the city government, is the amount of money that when we strike our budget gets raised by taxation. And what Mr. Martin said was, not that the rate was the same, but that the amount of money that we raised from year to year was the same, so we controlled our budget. So there might have been an 18% increase in the electric bill, but the amount of money that the taxpayers are paying in total stayed the same. So that's what we control. And in that scenario, as I said to you, if the evaluation of the city went up and the amount we raised by taxation stayed the same, the tax rate actually goes down, but that doesn't necessarily, we don't really control that, that's just a math exercise. But in the end, what happens, the divergence between whether your taxes go up or down and your neighbor's taxes go up and down, has something to do with the fact that the county, we don't control it, the county reevaluates everybody's property every year. So that kind of causes some changes. But from our point of view, the only thing that we can do, the only point that we can control, is how much in the budget we raise in total. That number, and that's what Mr. Martin said, stayed the same from year to year. So that's what happened. So I have to sit with all of your tax bills and explain to you how that, how it affects you individually, but that's a factor of it. If we reduced our budget, you know, by 10%, your taxes might still go up if your property value went up 50%, because it's just your piece of the pie got bigger because of the valuations. That's all it is. So there's not necessarily an equal correlation that there's a 0% increase in the amount of money we raise and a 0% increase in your taxes, but because it's a closed loop, the total amount is the same, so if somebody goes up, somebody goes down. That's the answer. I can't explain it any, I don't think, easier than that. Council President.
Thank you.
So let me be even a little more specific, Nick. And again, you know, I know this has been a concern of yours, so if you want me to say it now, I certainly can, in your particular case, what your situation is. You're okay with that?
I have...
Okay. So again, I'm just gonna sort of piggyback on what Mr. Raynone said. So just to be clear, there's a couple of things, one that I just wanna, I know I mentioned to you before. So first off, you have to understand of what anybody's property tax bill is, the municipal portion of it is about 38%, okay? The municipal portion of the school board is about 47%, county 13%, library somewhere between 2 and 3%. So again, we're talking about that 37% of what you're paying. So it's, our budget last year was $46 million and change. This year, it is exactly that, not a penny more, okay? So take into consideration, again, what that's, that's what we need to raise from the property tax, who are paying property taxes. So it is flat. Consider, if you will, that we had an increase of $1.2 million in health insurance alone, add pension, cost of goods, contractual, and so forth. I mean, in your household, my household, everyone's household, I think everything has gone up from last year to this year. So again, understand that our municipal budget has stayed the same and is absolutely flat. Now, the average increase of an assessment, average home, and correct me if I'm, the average home has gone up in the city $85,000, right? That's average. In your particular case, so to Mr. Raynone's point, that means that some people will be paying more municipal portion, some people will be paying less. In your case, you will be paying less. So for example, in your case, municipal portion, because I'm not speaking for the Board of Ed, or, you know, I have no idea where they are or the county, in your case, like I said, the average home went up $85,000. Your assessment went up $64,000. So basically, based on that information, you would have a reduction, or you should have a reduction, and again, don't hold me to it exactly, of about $32. Because again, your assessment went up 64, to the average going up 85, and then you have the municipal, what the taxpayers have to pay is the same at $46 million. So I don't know if that's, you know, if that, you know, sort of helps what Mr. Raynone said, but again, now you also have to consider, I can't speak for 48% of what the Board of Ed did, the 13% for the county, or the 2% for the library. And by the way, the library is fixed. It's based on the valuation of the city, which has gone up significantly as well. So I mean, but that's just by state formula. So I don't know. Does that make anything a little more clear? As Mr. Raynone said, the tax rate has actually gone down.
Correct.
But again, you know, the number I gave you, I'll be repetitious now. Your assessment went up, went down compared to the average homeowner, which why municipal portion, you should be paying about $32 less.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know, does anybody have anything to answer that?
Nope.
I need a motion to close the participation portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I want to ask Madam Clerk if there's any changes to the list of resolutions?
No changes have been made.
Thank you. We can take the list of resolutions of the concerned agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Dangler.
Yes, as the weather changes, the summer is here, not officially, but certainly we opened up the summer, beaches and so on are active, just please be safe as far as enjoying yourself and allow everyone else to enjoy their time in the city here of Long Branch. And I just want to say that Long Branch is a good city, it's a safe city. In regards to being afraid to, you know, to walk up and down Broadway, if you will, not if you will, but walk up and down Broadway, no, I'm not afraid to walk up and down Broadway. This is my town. But I'm gonna be honest with you, at 11, 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, I'm not walking anywhere. I don't care, I don't care where it is. So it's just unfortunate with the lives that was taken on that night in March, but it's not a reflection of what the city of Long Branch is and who we are. Thank you, sir. Not just you, sir, just want to let people know that we are doing a good job trying to make sure that everyone is safe. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thanks, Councilman Dangler. Councilman Rassus?
Thank you, Council President Vera. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's always nice to hear everyone's concerns. I want to thank the Department of Public Works for doing a great job getting the oceanfront ready for the summer. It's beautiful. I also encourage everyone to go down. The banners are hanging up for the hometown heroes. It's a great program that was spearheaded by Councilwoman Wittes several years ago, and each year it's become more and more successful. So try to get out and see the banners, it's beautiful. And I just want to wish everyone have a great spring, enjoy the summer, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rassus? Councilwoman Wittes?
I too would like to thank everyone for coming in for your comments and your concerns, and we hope everyone has a good next two weeks, and we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say that I appreciate your comments about, first of all, those two issues, certainly safety and taxes are huge issues, and I think you know, I mean, the council has, the amount of time and thought dedicated to that is tremendous, so it certainly is a priority for us. But the point that you made, I think, is an important one, that the public generally doesn't understand the dynamics. And even as Mr. Raynone was explaining it, and the mayor was explaining it, there are a lot of pieces to it, to be able to understand globally what's happening, and then to kind of say, well, wait a second, how does my situation fit in there? More recently, you know, we have moved to where the CFO does a budget presentation, which he will do again, you know, when the budget is on the agenda. But I would also encourage anyone who has questions about the budget and, you know, really wants to take a particular look at it in terms of your situation, you know that council hours are the first Wednesday of every month. And if you call the city clerk and just request to have a time, you know, at that Wednesday meeting, and say, you know, this is what you would like to talk about specifically, and then, you know, the clerk and the council president will put together the right people to be there so that we can have a full discussion. But, so that's one way, you know, individually. But I also want to say, I think the point that you're making more generally of how we inform the public and help them understand is an important thing for us to look at. So I appreciate, I appreciate your comment. And appreciate you coming out, you regularly come out regularly, and as do you, so we appreciate you being here, and hope that you have a good next two weeks. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Thank you, Council President. I just have three events that I'd like, well, that I'd like to mention. So Councilman Rassus talked about the hometown heroes banners that are up on the boardwalk. They run the length of the boardwalk. We had a total of 112 banners this year, which is, you know, just keeps growing each year, and we want to thank everyone who participated. And again, I always like to thank Councilwoman Wittes because she, you know, she brought that to our attention. We have several fun days coming up. These are free events planned this summer for families to enjoy, including a free barbecue and movie night. So check our website for all the full schedule of events and things. And the last thing I just wanted to mention was, there's a very important and impactful exhibit at the, at the library that just began yesterday. It's called Americans and the Holocaust. It's now at the library, will run for the next 30 days or till the end of June. Please check out this traveling exhibit that was chosen as one of just 100 locations throughout the United States by the National Holocaust Museum in Washington. It's their traveling exhibit. The library has more information about the exhibit, the hours, it's in the basement of the library, so it's, whatever their hours are, you can go and visit the exhibit, but it's, like I said, it's really an important exhibit, and congratulations to the library because it was a competitive grant to get that exhibit. So thank you all for being here, and have a great week.
Thank you, Mayor Palone. And I just wanted to... And I just want to thank you for coming out tonight, and I have my fellow councilmen mention most of the stuff I was gonna mention, but I got one really important that you're very true what the Councilwoman Vogts says, most of the resident doesn't know about how things work with the taxes, and that's why I will try to explain the best to the mayor. And the other one is, the banners, where we gotta thank our Councilwoman Rose Wittes for that, is this weekend, you know, I walk the boardwalk a lot, and I saw something that really impressed us, was the families under that banner showing that, listen, that was your great-grandparent or that was your grandfather, that's up there. And that really touched my heart a little bit when I saw those families underneath those banners. So that, that was really nice, and Councilwoman Wittes, thank you for bringing that idea, it was a great idea. And with that, I want to close then. Thanks for coming out tonight, and thank you, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Need a motion to close?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.